Thank you, Rob. So I'll call our committee, the whole meeting to order on February twenty second today. Is there any declaration of interest on this agenda? Not seeing any. The, yes, we do have business arising from minutes. We have a notice of motion from councillor Eccles. Councillor Eccles, would you like to move that notice of motion? Yes, I would. Is there a seconder? Thank you. Councillor Hutchinson, councillor Eccles, do you want to speak to it?
Certainly. Excuse me. Tapmo has the influencing group or organization has been around probably seven or eight years now, has done tremendous work in the aggregate industry with municipalities. Tapmo, top aggregate producing municipalities of Ontario. At the present moment, the chair, Jamie Seeley, Mayor of Pushland, and some of the work that they have done has been tremendous in getting the province to recognize the impact that aggregate producing producers have on municipalities and have worked very hard on the behalf of municipalities for getting our fair share, I guess is the best way to put it. Municipality of West Gray, I think municipality of, sorry, the township of Chatsworth, township of Southgate, our members, I'm trying to think, municipality of Gray Highlands, I believe is a member as well too. And I think of who's great county to certainly, there are a number of counties and have done great work. And it's a, it's a spot that absolutely Gray County should be in. Our aggregate mapping from nineteen ninety something, when there was a big project done on aggregate mapping. I think Mr. Schertz or in the planning department used that a fair bit was done. Gray County has sixty percent of the recognized aggregate resources for southern Ontario. And I think going forward, being part of this organization is not only a good thing, but it should be mandatory for Gray County to be there. So certainly like support for us. I don't believe that the financial impact is tremendous, but on the expense side, but the revenue side of it. Mary Lou, I think you can probably speak to it of what the work that Tapmo was done to bring the revenues recognizing into not only our lower tiers, but the county as well too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mary Lou, do you want to speak to that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I've sat in the last few Tapmo meetings, so they typically they have the ones where we can access. It was at AMO and OGRA. Councillor Eccles is correct. So the invoice that we, we received an unsolicited invoice for two thousand and twenty-three that we did not pay. It was in the neighborhood of sixteen hundred dollars and the banker for Tapmo is Wellington County's treasurer, Ken DeHart. And Wellington was leading the charge on the, of course, the Wellington related appeals and trying to get the assessed value of any pits and quarries within their jurisdiction properly assessed, and they were quite successful. The, the local treasurers here had a similar conversation about what we should do. And so we had a conversation last year with MTE, who recommended that, you know, there was a very different situation in Wellington County with the the pits and quarries being very close to the four oh one corridor and not to expect the significant money out of appeals that Wellington saw. Instead, they recommended that we take a look and we evaluate whether there was anything in what MPAC had in assessment, whether there were in any inaccuracies. So was it in the right class? Was the size of the pit appropriate? Had there been any adjustments that weren't recorded, et cetera? MTE identified sixty-three pits and quarries within Gray, Gray County that had data quality issues that we should bring to MPAC's attention. So each of the locals agreed and that work was submitted to MPAC by MTE. So Tapmo talks about their priorities being property assessment, best practices in extractive rezoning, working with the ministry as far as like what the torque fees are, aggregate levies and excess soil regulation. So it's doing a lot of advocacy work on behalf of municipalities. At the time, the January meeting was held at OGRA, Ken DeHart confirmed that the only county member in, in the group was Wellington County. And when I just looked at their website today, I noticed that Brant County is now a member.
Just to add to Mary Lou's comments, the work that I understand Tapmo is also following on, it hasn't been mentioned yet, is work with the ministry on behalf of all of us to ensure that there are adequate inspection resources available to provide oversight and adherence to regulation. And also with regard to ensuring that producers do undertake the appropriate rehabilitation of pits and quarries once they, their licenses have reached the, the end of their life. There are not a lot of resources, not a lot of inspection resources right now. And I mean, that starts to then impact on the ability to ensure that all of the producers are upholding the terms of their licenses and what we need and want them to do in our communities. So Tapmo's asked for our support to allow them to have a stronger voice and to do more of the work on, on everyone's behalf.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions? Discussion? Councillor Jibrine?
Thank you through you. So Tapmo is asking county to become a member. What is the membership? Is it sixteen hundred? And does that membership, is there, is there a membership that encompasses the lower tiers? Or does everyone have to have their own individual membership in order to sit at the table?
Who'd like to have a go at the councillor Eccles? Go ahead.
Yes, it would be that the lower tiers, there isn't, as in FCM, the county has the membership and that incorporates all, but no, the Tapmo would be on an individual basis for everybody to join.
Follow up?
Thank you. And so through you to staff, this is something that staff are supportive of being rejoining. I'm just curious as to why didn't we, why did we exit membership in the first place, if anyone knows?
I don't think Gray County has been a member in the past. Never been a, yeah. So Mary Lou's confirming that. We've never been a member in the past. Okay? Good. Any other questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Delegations, we have Jason Moreto here from Invest Corporation. Thank you, sir, for your patience. The, Jason is here from a company called Invest. He's going to give us a presentation on bioenergy. So Jason, welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Warden Millen and council for inviting me here today and allowing me to provide you information of, on our Southgate Renewables Bioenergy Project in the township of Southgate. I have ten minutes allotted, so I'll try to get through this slide presentation quickly and then leave some time open for questions and answers, and I'll do my best to answer your questions. Just want to cover who we are, our company and what we do, and a few of our bioenergy references and experience. My name is Jason Moreto. As you, you know, I'm a co-founder, CEO and president of Invest Corp. We're based in Toronto. We were founded just about ten years ago. We have about seventy people in our organization and we are a mid-market independent energy producer. So we design, build, own, operate and finance inner energy projects primarily focusing on power generation, thermal generation and, and also byproducts like, like fertilizer as well, which you'll hear about more in upcoming slides. Mid-market, we mean capital expenditures of about one hundred and fifty million dollars and under on our projects. And we have operations in in North America. So although we're, we're a Canadian homegrown business. We also own a sustainability subsidiary called Bullfrog Power. Some of you may know that brand. It's been operating in Canada since two thousand and five. And what Bullfrog Power does is provide about nine thousand residential customers and fifteen hundred corporate customers decarbonization solutions through provision of environmental attributes and other, other products. In our infrastructure business, we focus on distributed energy and bioenergy. I'm here to take, to just talk about bioenergy. And in our, our last decade of operations, we have displaced three million metric tons of CO2 emissions, diverted about five hundred thousand metric tons of organic waste from landfills and produced over half a million metric tons of organic fertilizer. And we keep producing more and more of these environmental benefits. When we founded the company, we, we formed the company with an intent of partnering with indigenous communities where we can. We're not just talking the talk, we walk the walk. And, you know, we, we we have, it, it's part of our DNAs as a company. When, when we formed the company, our founding four directors included a well-known national indigenous leader who just received his order of Canada last year. And the co-founder and chairman has a, is a, is a leading legal expert in indigenous law and has a practice at a Bay Street law firm. So we have, we try to structure a equity partnership where we can. And Southgate is an example of that, and we'll get more into that in the later slide. Our experience in the bioenergy industry and organics recycling, which is what we're here to discuss, really goes back to our first project, which is the Seacliff Energy Facility in Leamington, Ontario. This was commissioned in two thousand and ten, and this is the first privately owned commercial scale anaerobic digester in Canada. I was one of the developers of this. And what we do here is we have the environmental permit to process up to one hundred and ten thousand metric tons per year of organic waste material. Organic waste goes into that long building that you see there. It is depackaged and then goes into a series of anaerobic digesters. In this case, in the thermophilic range at about sixty degrees Celsius for a couple of days, and then those large three vessels that you see there towards the right in the mesophilic range, about thirty degrees for a month to create biogas. The biogas is rich in methane, sixty percent methane, about thirty percent CO2. And in this case, we run that biogas, that methane through a cogeneration facility, which you see there on the left. And that electricity, that renewable electricity is sold to the province of Ontario under a twenty-year feed-in tariff contract. And the thermal energy is provided to the seven acre greenhouse that you see there in the back that produces organic tomatoes. We are a leader, we're a pioneer in this space. Again, there is no other, there's no other group in the country that has over a decade of experience operating a private enterprise that operates in the, in the marketplace for green bin processing, organics, recycling. And in our history, you could see the municipalities that we processed for region appeal, York Region, Halton Region, County of Simcoe. Recent contracts that we have are with the city of Toronto. Essex Windsor Solid Waste Authority is starting their, their, their green bin program in twenty twenty-five. So we've won that for eight years. And most recently in August of last year, Durham Region, we're processing up to fifty thousand metric tons per year over a ten-year contract. We've been recognized for our innovation in this space federally, provincially and municipally. And you know, one of the big drivers here on the adoption of source separated organics or green bin programs is the Waste Free Ontario Act of two thousand and sixteen. I'm sure most of you are familiar with this. The first green bin program that we processed for was Peel Region back in two thousand and sixteen, but more and more municipalities are adopting residential organics collection because of provincial mandates to divert organics from landfills. And I'm sure you know that organics going into landfills is a bad thing because when you bury organics, when they decompose in the absence of oxygen, it produces methane. And methane is twenty-eight times more potent a greenhouse gas than CO2, which is why it's try, you know, landfills try to collect methane and flare it before it enters the atmosphere. Composting is a technology that's probably about a half century old. But you'll see that more projects are moving towards anaerobic digestion and the procurements from municipalities now typically mandate anaerobic digestion as composters are no longer built in, they're, they're, it's older technology fraught with odor issues and they are net positive GHGs or greenhouse gases and anaerobic digesters are net negative facilities. So we create a, because of the capturing of the methane, we're able to use that to produce renewable energy, which offsets the consumption of fossil fuel energy. So there are byproducts that help to reduce the impact on the environment with an anaerobic digester versus an aerobic digestion system, which is composting. Just another reference here, our experience in the anaerobic digestion industry and bioenergy has led us to owning a biodiesel facility in Miami, Florida. So we have a biodiesel plant that is recycling used cooking oil in that southern Florida area and producing up to ten million gallons per year of biodiesel. That biodiesel is used by trains, ships, trucks and is typically blended in a ten percent biodiesel, ninety percent diesel blend, but some cruise ships are now operating with a thirty percent blend. And we just had a meeting with Carnival Cruises, who is looking to purchase our biodiesel in greater quantities, has a ship that's running on one hundred percent biodiesel. So it is a way for these companies and municipalities and governments to offset or decarbonize their, their operations. And I want to speak to you here today about our Southgate Renewables Project in the township of Southgate. So this is, this would be the seventh commercial scale anaerobic digester in Ontario. There are four privately owned facilities. And there are the two that are owned by the city of Toronto. You probably noticed that we also process for the city of Toronto, which is kind of a, a hint to how well those city of Toronto facilities are operating. This, this project is a lot of the lessons learned over the last decade of operations in Leamington. We are building into this project. This project is fully permitted and it's very interesting for Ontario and the industry because it is in a very good proximity to the epicenter of the population of Canada and Ontario being around the GTA or being within that one hundred kilometer hauling distance from the GTA. That means a lot because a lot of the costs of to processing and dealing with organic residential waste is the hauling component. So taken into consideration that green bin is about seventy percent water. We are transporting water here, so we try to minimize that distance and the Eco Parkway location in Dundalk in township of Southgate is, is a perfect area for servicing southern Ontario. And some of the largest SSO programs, including Toronto, Halton, Peel Region, Durham Region and Merck Region. The project is fully permitted and has been fully permitted for a while at seventy-three thousand metric tons per year. That will allow us to produce two hundred thousand gigajoules per year of renewable natural gas to be injected into the Enbridge Pipeline. And we do have an interconnection agreement with Enbridge that we signed two or three years ago. We have had strong public support. Thank you, Warden Millen, and thank you to the mayor for, for driving that. It's been well received. And that means a lot in the success of, of the project and where we are at today. The effluent from the process will be a certified organic fertilizer with the registered NPK label with Canada Food Inspection Agency, just like we have already at our other facility. And that is to be spread on farmers' crops and fields in the region. That would be because of its organic certification, it is a valuable input for organic farmers. We started with a five acre parcel, which is the permitted site. Township of Southgate was very gracious in assisting us with adding a second five acre parcel. Three acres of that second parcel is actually usable because of the the creek they're running behind it. But it's valuable because the five acres was a bit tight in terms of truck turning radius and storage. So we're not changing the inputs and outputs of the project, but modifying the layout. And so we're undergoing right now a, a minor amendment to that ECA with the ministry just for the, for the layout. So, and that's progressing well. We'll, we'll be completing detailed engineering this year on this, and then we embark on construction thereafter. You can see we've already cleared the site. We've installed a sign just to put notice to the community of what is happening there. And we have held public consultations as well, informations sessions for, for the township. And circling back to our, our commitment to indigenous reconciliation, when we founded the business, we have structured the, the, the corporation here for this project as a limited partnership with the Mississaugas of the Credit and the Mississaugas of Skugod Island First Nations, where Invest owns fifty percent of this project and the other, the two First Nations will own the other half. We'll obviously design, build, own and operate and finance the project. But we will work with them as co-owners. So the equity and profits over the years do accrue to these First Nations. I think I'm within my ten minutes here. I should just say that we have used this model before. We're building a large-scale wind microgrid in Labrador at the Boise's Bay Mine Site that's owned by Vale. It's one of the biggest mine sites, nickel mines in Canada. This is an important component to their four billion dollar mining expansion and our project is decarbonizing that mine from zero because it's all driven by diesel fuel today to twenty percent renewables. And the value for Canada and the mining company is that it gets the commodity closer to creating a green nickel commodity. And with that status, it is more appealing to sustainable industries like EV production elsewhere in the world. So it's a valuable input in a sustainability chain of supply. That's the end of my brief presentation, so I want to open it up to questions and I'll do my best to answer your, your questions.
Thank you, Jason. And just so that nobody missed it, you heard that Jason said Southgate was a perfect area. Did, did everybody catch that? Okay, just so they're clear. Any questions? Councillor Body?
Thank you, Warden Millen. I've got two or three or four questions. Boy, these are exciting times. This is changing so rapidly. At least three of us in the room went and toured the, the Toronto Scarborough site that I think was run by Aqua. It's doing something similar. Right? City of Toronto site? Dufferin site, is that? Yeah, it's doing something similar. So, so are you are you getting source separated organics? Is it source separated before it gets to you? Are you getting bags of garbage and then trying to pull them out?
Yep. Okay. Yeah, the term source separated organics means that it is, the organic material is separated at the source, which is the residence, right? And then we put it in the green bins. And those green bins come to us in already packaged. So the, oh, there you see the photo of our current facility on the left, that long building inside there is de-packaging systems. So it'll rip apart the, the bags, separate the cans, glass and all the stuff that goes into those green bins. So that we separate out a inorganic fraction from the organic fraction. The organic fraction continues to go into the process to create that, that biogas and that fertilizer.
Thank you for that. Is there any special license or anything needed with regard to spreading the organic output that's coming out the back end?
Yes, absolutely. So the material needs to be fertilizer. And hence the reason why it is registered with the Canada Food Inspection Agency with NPK label, nitrogen phosphorus potassium label as a fertilizer. So it is spreadable. And obviously there, there are a couple of different pathways to spreading that on farms, as many of you will know. And then there's certain times of the year where that can be done. So we store during those winter months where we cannot spread into a network of lagoons, some that we own, some that the farmers own. So we built a network for, for storage over the winter months.
Two, two more. You talked about thirty percent of CO2. What are you doing with it or what's, what's likely to happen?
Very good question. So renewable natural gas, so our this existing facility where you see the cogeneration plant there in the blue mechanical equipment there on the left, that we're replacing actually right now with the renewable natural gas system. And for a couple of reasons. Number one is renewable natural gas is more lucrative than renewable electricity. And then secondly, those feed-in tariff contracts. uh for a couple of reasons. Number one is renewable natural gas is more lucrative than renewable electricity. And then secondly, those feed and tariff contracts are expiring after twenty years, so that we're coming up to the end of that life because uh that feed and tariff was awarded in twenty ten. Um so what happens in a renewable natural gas processing system is that the system strips out the CO2 and other uh compounds such as H two uh hydrogen sulfide and and other other compounds, so that the end uh natural gas, which is commodity grade meets the specification for injection onto the Enbridge Pipeline, which is has to exceed about ninety eight percent uh methane. So the molecules themselves, once they're in the pipeline, are no different than the fossil fuel uh CH four molecules. Except that these have renewable uh sources, so it's a renewable form of energy. Um and that CO2 is is stripped out. There are um some uh we're we're looking at capturing that CO2 and and pressurizing it and selling to industry. And uh but that's kind of a a side side product and and byproduct that is uh not the core focus. It's a small component of what we're doing at Southgate.
So so well, I guess it's kind of two, but when are you going to be set up? And given that you're in Gray County and we've been talking since uh some of us will remember, we were out at Walters Falls and uh seven years ago and the warden was uh uh Warden Barfoot. We started to talk about Gray County um collecting garbage, collecting uh the bio uh uh source separated and those types of things. So now that you're in Gray County or when will you be uh set up in Gray County? And will we be getting a hometown discount to be able to give you all of our uh bio solids? Thank you.
Uh commissioning is scheduled for Q four twenty twenty six. And I absolutely guarantee a discount for everyone here.
You heard it here first. Any other questions? Okay, sorry. Oh, Council McQueen, my mistake. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for your your presentation. So obviously, looking at the map. If you go to the map, we're look at your distance from the major source, Toronto. Altonville region and that. But obviously, you're looking for a circle around that, maybe following up with with uh the mayor. Uh what sound was talking about is you're looking bigger.
Yeah, so the market drives the distance to the the site. Um as an example, we just won the Durham Region contract for ten years. Durham is to the right of uh Toronto, obviously where Oshawa is. And it's being hauled all the way to Leamington, so that's a four-hour haul. That's one way and then four hours back, so it's an entire day for one truck. So we're as we're cost effective enough to haul that distance. Obviously, the closer we are to the source of the material, we're we're able to pass along those savings to the uh to the generator of that that material. So that is a benefit and uh what that does is drive wins of uh in procurements and municipal uh procurements.
So you're looking everywhere for for product and?
Was was the question, are we looking for product? Absolutely. That's a great point. So we're at a point in the development of this project. We have our permit. We have um our agreements. We actually have an off-take agreement with the Quebec Utility for the Renewable Natural Gas for twenty years. And now is the time where we are uh collecting interest from municipalities to fill that seventy three thousand ton commitment. There is a movement that we've noticed, the procurements um when we did the first Peel Region contract in twenty sixteen. They're typically three years with maybe uh two-year extenders as part of the term. And now we're starting to see a movement where um there is more and more source separated organics programs. There is limited capacity. These facilities take a long time to permit and to develop, you know, five to ten years easily. Um so you see that York Region went out for a twenty-year procurement. You see that Essex Windsor went out for an eight-year procurement. Durham went out with a ten-year. So we're starting to see that more because what's happening, our municipalities are uh trying to capture uh the available capacity before it's all taken up. So uh really am here to invite the county um to the facility. It's in it's it's in your your county and and um it would be good to rely on that support um and uh and lock up that capacity for the municipalities here.
Thanks, sir. And oh, sorry, go ahead, Paul.
I yeah, okay, thank you. I I'm doing the same as the mayor. A bone sound, you gotta keep clicking here. Last question is obviously with the natural gas expansion or or maybe not as much, but Enbridge talks about renewable natural gas. So I guess you, Mr. Warren, you Enbridge or this line or there's a line close to there, I presume. So then is there a target of what you're trying to with your plant or or availability of that planet full full uh production could put into the natural gas system?
Yes, so we are um targeting two hundred thousand uh gigajoules per annum is the plan. And that's what the equipment is designed to uh produce. That has already passed, uh you know, um uh due diligence with Enbridge. And uh you know, we signed uh our interconnection agreement with Enbridge uh at the pipeline head there. Uh at the Eco Parkway in twenty twenty one, so they're waiting for the gas to be injected and we have a market in Quebec that is waiting to receive that gas already. That's a very difficult uh agreement to um to 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 secure, yeah, and for Enbridge to commit the capacity in their pipeline for that purpose.
Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you, Warden Millen, and thank you, Jason. I I did want to thank the organization as a whole for being so cooperative and flexible throughout the process. Uh we, the the enclosed space, the the lagoons are not um outside. There everything that is going to happen onsite will be enclosed, negative pressure. We're trying to mitigate odor issues. It's not biosolids. Um the it's it's green organics. It will be able to take and maybe um at this is more of a question. Our green bin compost program be able to, you'll be able to take some of that. But I'm I'm reassured that, as you said, it separates the package from the actual stuff that you can use because we all know about wish recycling and and people think that it can go in this bin, but it really shouldn't and but so you sort that doesn't have to be perfectly clean. You sort that. And I know that the 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 farms, the green bin programs, it's all about organics. I'm, I guess my question is, is the natural gas that's being produced and fed into the pipeline at source there, why is it going to Quebec when we're told that we're short on gas supply in order to serve our 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 region, our our own community? And then the OEB and the natural gas elimination, the 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 target to eliminate natural gas entirely when we need it so badly in our agricultural communities and our ag businesses. I know it's kind of not really a question, but just if you could confirm the green bin program and acceptability.
Yeah, so um we, you know, green bin organics programs, as you know, uh really start with educating the public so that they actually uh separate. Uh I live in York Region in Vaughan. And we have a black bin at home. We have a green bin and a blue bin, blue bin for the recyclables. Uh green bin for the organics and everything else goes into the black bin and they go to different outlets. That green bin comes to our place because we still are doing the York Region uh work at this facility. Um we do have de-packaging equipment here and the more uh contraries that are included is additional cost for us. Typically, those are eight to ten percent of the mass is contrary. We do our best to, well, we we depackage, number one. We actually uh have a system that was recently uh put in that uh actually presses out any kind of water that's still in that depackage material again. So what is left is a very dry um inorganic fraction that gets stockpiled and when there's enough for a load, that goes to a landfill. But that is not uh that's not a a culprit for greenhouse gases because the organics remain here. So we've, you know, uh and the good thing about that is uh landfills with by by eliminating and diverting organics from landfills, now the life of landfills can be extended. And they're not places where, you know, they're not factories for greenhouse gases or or that's reduced. Um but we've had uh we've had things show up in our uh in those trucks. Um actually, we had a visit by Central County uh two Fridays ago. I was there to to meet them. And uh I forgot that we processed for them years ago, but they reminded us that they were the ones who sent three deer carcasses to us. And uh so, yeah, things end up showing up somehow, some way in those trucks. Um but we we I'm sure we made some good biogas from from those carcasses.
Okay, well, Council McQueen, go.
Just one last question. Uh thank you, Mr. Warden. On the on the agricultural side, if you're making two hundred thousand kilojoules from that plant you're gonna build, what kind of volume and maybe it's putting you on the spot with regards to toxic liquid fertilizer and and other types of fertilizer? But from the agricultural side, what what kind of fertilizer volumes are you going to be producing?
Um so seventy uh permit for seventy three thousand uh metric tons per year. There is uh often because of the composition of the uh incoming stream may be dry. This is called a wet digestion process. So there's a certain amount of uh hydration that's required to process through. Uh we try to recycle as much of what we press out and recycle that, so we don't put any potable water in the system for a couple of reasons, because number one, it's wasteful and number two, it costs money. So you try to reuse and recycle. As a matter of fact, in the case there in Leamington, that seven acre greenhouse that you see, the wash water from their growing process is recycled into our uh facility. And then we recycle that liquid fertilizer into their system, so they can apply it to their their crops there. Um but to answer your question specifically, seventy three thousand metric tons in, add whatever water needed to be added to that, and that's your effluent. So it's what is in goes out plus the water. So let's just say up to eighty thousand metric tons of a liquid fertilizer would be going out every year.
Okay. Surprised to say that if you're looking to start in a blue green bin system, this is the guy to talk to. Uh I'm gonna give the last uh last chance to Counselor Pringle.
Thank you, Warden. Just a quick question on the process, sir, Jason. Um you have the facility to take the materials. How does a township like Georgia Bluffs get those materials to you? Uh what's the logistics on that scenario?
Good question. Um so there's usually procurements. Municipal procurements are uh one of two options. Number one, where we're responsible for picking up at a transfer station at the municipality that they they uh they they uh select. The other, um as in a recent procurement that we just had is the uh municipality wants to deliver it to us. And so there's there's different options. And in that procurement, they'll say they'll take uh apply this much cost per kilometer into that proposal cost. So it really depends. The municipality drives that decision.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Great presentation, lots of interest. As I say, if you're thinking of starting a green bin system, this is the guy to talk to. Thank you. Okay, moving along. It is now quarter after twelve and told that lunch is here. Well, lunch is here. Apparently, uh Mr. Eccles has already sculpted out. Maybe he's already eaten. I don't know. What would council's pl- council's pleasure be? We haven't got a lot more to do, I don't think. Uh we have consent and two items for discussion. We do have a, well, we may need a closed session. We don't must not uh have one. Want to keep going or do you want to stop? I'm hearing lunch. All right, well, let's recess and we'll reconvene. We'll try to reconvene at one o'clock. We'll stand recessed. All right. Thank you, Rob. We'll bring the meeting back to order. Think we can agree that was a pretty good lunch. At least I ate well. Company at my table was a little sketchy, but it was uh the lunch was good. Okay, moving right along. Uh we have the consent agenda, which is next. Is there any of those items needed to be removed for further discussion? Counselor Mattress Hops.
Thank you um to you, the word. Now we'd like to pull C uh six B, B as in Bob. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other requests? Seeing none, if someone could move uh acceptance or receiving of those items, save and accept six B, Counselor Hutchison. Counselor Kivony, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, that is carried. Uh items for direction and discussion. First is seven A, which is regards to hydro easement uh for Hydro One Networks and Gray County Housing. And I see Anne Marie is here to uh take us through that report. I need a mover in a second with the first, Counselor Deckard and Counselor Nielsen. Thank you. Welcome, Anne Marie.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good afternoon, County Council. Um this report is basically uh Hydro One has requested an easement at our Alpha Street uh complex in Owen Sound. Um they are proposing to update the services that are onsite right now. Uh in order to do that, they need to install a kiosk and in order to do that, they need an easement um onto our land. Um there is a diagram of where they have um requested the easement. Uh it is does not interfere with um the driveway or any of the other utilities that are on site. Uh they are providing a one-time payment of two hundred and fifty dollars to us for the agreement and a hundred, or sorry, one thousand two hundred and fifty for a one-time sum for the registration. Um so we are looking for direction from um council to proceed with um our process in regards to the easement.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Anytime you can get Hydro One to send you money, that's a win in my category. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, that is carried. Thank you, Anne Marie. Uh the next item is regarding a oh changes to Gray County Transportation. We have Stephanie here with us this morning. Welcome, Stephanie. Someone care to move that motion? Counselor Carlton and Counselor DeBreen, thank you. Oh, wait. Oh, yes, the motion, who made that? Carl, which option would you prefer to be inserted into that? Or if you'd rather the CEO speak and give a little clarification first? Okay, we'll do that. Kim.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Council. So uh the report that um Stuart has before us speaks to uh two options for operating the gray transit route service until March thirty first, twenty twenty five. Um staff's recommendation is that option one be supported. Funding the oversight and management of the system from one-time funding uh then allows us to maximize the use of the grant funding for providing transit services. With option one, we can continue to provide the most service to the most riders with the time that we know the service has left. And uh as well, Stephanie wants to speak a little bit to uh what's happening, what we're considering as far as future research and analysis that we might bring back to you. So option one is what staff would recommend, if that's okay.
So going back to the mover of the motion, are you good with option one to be inserted there, at least to start the discussion? Okay, very good. Stephanie.
Thank you, your worship, and um good afternoon, County Council. So as um C A one Grove just explained, um there are two different options. Option one is the recommendation staff would like to uh move forward with. This aligns our costs to what is available left with the grant, and it also gives us the best service for the most amount of people with what we have left. So this is the best option that um myself and my colleagues have So this is the best option that, um, myself and my colleagues have thought of and proposed. Uh, this was thought out based on ridership statistics, our most recent survey results. Um, how many stops are in your community? Can you get to those areas another way by connecting through a different transit service? And every time we eliminated a stop. And we take something off every minute and every kilometer saved us a dollar or two dollars or a penny. So, uh, as you see. In there, there are a number of suggestions that I can walk you through as to some stops that will also be removed. Um, and that's how we got to those stops. Being removed was off of a number of considerations. Um, additionally, we've talked many times about the ridership and the usage. It's clear it is a needed service in our community. Um, so I believe that our ridership will continue to increase as more people continue to move out here. And the demand continues to increase. Additionally, there is a lot of work that can be done. Working with our private sector, working with ride sharing opportunities, carpooling opportunities, working with our taxis here in, in our larger centers like Hanover and Owen Sound, and how do we set up our residents for success? Because at the end of the day, an inter-community service will only be an inter-community service that runs along fixed highways. And we still need to get people to that. So what does that mean? So that's applying for potential grants. There's Infrastructure Canada has two grant opportunities out right now. One's capital and one's project and planning. So those will be opportunities I would consider applying for. Um, there's also working with the Owen Sound Chamber and applying for not-for-profit opportunities. So there's lots of different avenues that we can continue to pursue if public transportation is something that County Council wants to invest in. But that investment needs to be confirmed, not of actual financial investment, but the long-term commitment to a vision of transit needs to be confirmed. Because I don't want to keep misleading our residents as they set up their lives using a system and then it may not be here post 2025. So I think we need to take that into consideration as we move forward. Um, there's lots of opportunity. I can't guarantee what any of those opportunities will look like or turn into, um, but I'm committed to doing the work and working with Bruce County, Wellington County, Simcoe County. There's lots of us at the table with the same problem that we're trying to solve. So as discussed, there are two options, uh, this chart here lays out what those options are. The main difference between option one and option two, option one maximizes the grant funds for transit service. Taking additional funding from one-time reserves, whereas option two takes less money from one-time funding. But that also means less service to our riders. So what does that actually look like? Uh, sorry, that's small. Uh, I don't know if we can make it any bigger. Uh, I mean, you can see it on your screens closer to you. But, uh, what that translates to very simply is option one offers four trips up and down highway 26. Option two equals two trips along highway 26. Simple, that's, that's the, the bare bones of it. Additionally, a major shift that will occur is that post, uh, the September long weekend. It is my suggestion that the service no longer runs to Wyerton, uh, to save funds, to ensure that we can offer the most service possible to our residents. That being said, those conversations have had, ha- have happened with Bruce County and South Bruce Peninsula. Um, on other ways we can continue the service because they believe it is very valuable for their residents. So, um, it's not completely off the table. It's just. That's a suggestion that I've brought forward to save some money. Um, additionally, the stops that we would remove, so between Owen Sound and Dundalk, uh, my suggestion would be to eliminate the Gray County Admin Building Bus Stop location. And Hall and Center between Dundalk and Orangeville, I would like to suggest moving the stop from the arena to the library, um, as that's closer to where all the new subdivisions are. Um, and that has been feedback we've received from riders is they'd like the stop moved closer. Um, there's four stops to eliminate on that route, Super Burger, two in Shelburne and one in Orangeville. That will speed up our, our time and our kilometers traveled. So those are opportunities to save some additional dollars there. And again, based on ridership, this is why these stops are selected. Um, between Owen Sound and Meaford, this will be a significant shift. Uh, however, it kind of makes the service more of an, an express, which could be very beneficial for a lot of people who just want to get into town, do their groceries and then go home. So that could be, um, excellent for them. And a lot of those other stops beside the Bumstead Clinic, um, can be accessed through Owen Sound Transit. Um, additionally, between Meaford and Blue, we're suggesting removing the medical center in Blue Mountains and the Craigleaf Depot. And lastly, removing the shallow lake stop, um, between, along highway six. Um, I'll open the floor to questions. I can go back to either chart if you prefer.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good report. Any questions? Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden. Thanks, Stephanie, for your report. Looking through the survey, it talked, I think it was 67% said they would support a fair increase. Um, what are your thoughts around increasing the fares and what would you recommend that fair increase be?
Through your worship, uh, so the caveat to that comment was. A lot of people said, yes, they'll, they'll accept a fee increase, but they're not sure what that means. And they don't know how much, and they say it needs to be conservative. Were all the comments, uh, and commentary that were added into that survey. So I would say if we were to increase the fees, I would want to go back out to the community and see what is affordable in their eyes. Because some people who use the service maybe once in a while might be okay with paying 10 or $15 to get to their end destination. But if you use it every day as a commuter service, you can't afford that $15. So it really depends. My honest suggestion is to not increase the fees. Because at the end of the day, that's not what's going to make a difference. If we were to increase the fees, we will lose ridership and the point is to fill the bus. And I want to fill the bus and I don't want to lose people by making it not affordable.
Counselor Carlton, you were, uh, you had your hand in there as well. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I don't really have a question, more of a comment, and I think it relates back to conversations we have with Chamber of Commerce. Transportation systems rarely make money. They are usually a service that's offered to the residents who need that service. And the comparison I would make is that we don't ask any of the people who drive vehicles why they use our roads. We just make sure there's roads there available for them. And I think there's a section of our demographic that need a bus service. And I think we need to seriously look at making sure that stays in place for them. Just my comment there. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Counselor DeBree.
Thank you, Warden. I, my one main question is what was the rationale? You, you alluded to the rationale for moving the bus stop in Dundalk from the arena to the library. Did you at any point in time find out how many people actually drive and park their vehicle at the bus stop in order to determine, does the library have adequate parking to accommodate that? Thank you.
Uh, through your worship, I, I've spoken with the library staff previously, and that was something they were interested in. Uh, we don't see a lot of people driving and parking there. Um, our drivers are very in tune with the riders' needs. And we can always leave that stop as an option. That's something we can still have available. If someone would say, hey, I really need to get to the Tim Hortons, can I go there instead or something? We can accommodate those things. But the majority of people have commented and said to me, I'm scared to walk from the arena back to that subdivision at night because it's like two kilometers. It's far. Um, so that's the reason that we've suggested moving it. Um, but if it becomes a concern, the opportunity is always there to move it back or adjust or add it back in.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Gray.
Thanks and through you, Warden. Um, I would have, uh, I had more closely pursued option two myself leading into today. Um, but one of the primary questions I had is what has informed your report so that you're aligning to, that you're maintaining four trips a day? Instead of looking at two or three on some of those other routes, like, is there data that is is there that you can provide us that says, no, four is, is, is the, is the best, um, direction that we should be going there? Or have we looked at three? Uh, what are the pitfalls of two? What are the pitfalls of three? Uh, and I do think that fares, if this is the report where fares were to be discussed. Uh, I'm surprised even that we discount from a $5 fare down to $4.50. I mean, to travel the distances we travel here in the GTR at $5 or $4.50 is not unreasonable to ask people to pay a little bit more on a fare that hasn't increased in 2020. The fuel prices went up, the purchase price of the vehicles have went up, the operating costs of the labor all surrounding the service has went up. So to be stagnant on the fares, just frankly, is not reasonable. So if this was a report to also speak to fares. Um, I think pursuing, uh, the potential of a fair increase is certainly reasonable.
Through your worship, in regards to your first questions of why four trips versus three and two. Um, in the world of transit, the more service, the better. Uh, it increases opportunity for people to travel and get to appointments and things like that. So I would hesitate to ever reducing anything more than what we already have. Um, the reason that those are the round trips is because this is what we could afford. Um, I would have liked to have more round trips, but this is what I could have come up with that we could afford. Um, is the, is the answer and in regards to fares, happy to look at anything, um, that council wishes. However, I do know that our riders were devastated to hear that the service was being reduced already. Um, we had riders get on the bus in tears to our drivers and they are the ones that are seeing the reality of what people are experiencing. Um, so I would, happy to do the work of council as you wish, but I would just suggest that there's an opportunity to continue offering the service the way it is.
And I appreciate that, uh, but just also to provide some experience or framework in terms of, uh, where I've come from. I have a daughter who, uh, a year ago, uh, was, uh, working a co-op at Simcoe Museum. And was riding the Berry to Penetang bus, which, uh, rode, uh, I think it's County Road 27 leaves Berry. And at a point she had to exit at Midhurst and walk along County Road 27 in the dark at 6:37 in the morning in, uh, autumn season, and then on to highway 26 to continue walking with a, a cohort to the Simcoe Museum for their co-op. So there is, there does come a point in time where we can only provide the best service that we can provide. And, and at times users have to recognize that if it's the Sunset Strip. Uh, but you have a transit service that can get you within 600 meters, 400 meters or 800 meters. That's pretty good when it's being supplied by the taxpayer, um, as a, as a whole. So those are my comments. Thanks.
Anyone else? Counselor Deckard.
Thank you, Warden. Uh, Stephanie, just wondering, uh, Bruce County just finished their, uh, transportation study late last year and just wonder how much interaction was there between Bruce and Gray County during that, uh, process? And, you know, when their summary, they more or less said that, uh, point-to-point transportation isn't really feasible in, in our area. And that they were looking to be more of a coordinator and overseer of other transportation services. So just wonder what your experience was with that.
Through your worship, thank you, Counselor. So I actually have worked quite extensively with the Bruce County. Um, they have had a few staff transitions over the years. And I have remained their point of contact throughout that, um, on this project. I've also worked with their consultants. So I got a call from their consultant on that, um, master plan. And I told them everything I knew and shared all the information I had and sent them as much data as I possibly could. So it has been an open door back and forth. Um, I recently met with two of their senior staff to discuss this report. And also to discuss the future of transit. Um, we are in agreement that between Bruce and Gray, um, looking at on-demand solutions would likely be more appropriate than point-to-point into Bruce. Um, so I do agree with their assessments and we are going to continue to work together to try to find better solutions through ride sharing, carpooling and different things and syncing up the two counties because there's a lot of transition between the two.
Counselor Dick, or, uh, Pringle, rather, sorry.
Thank you, Warden. Uh, Stephanie, thanks for your report on that. My question was going to be about the elimination of the stops. Do you know the, um, the negative effect that'll have on ridership towards people dropping off from using the bus because they have to get to whatever that destination is and it's not close anymore? And my second point was going to be on, um, usage of the ridership. I can see having a, somebody that rides it every day, getting the $5 or $4.50, wherever it is, but then one ops, you pay more than the guy that's there every day. So just a comment, but I just wondered if you have a, a number on the negative aspect of reducing all those stops.
Uh, through your worship, I don't have an actual number, but what I do know based on the the stops that I'm suggesting to remove, um, some of them will affect the ridership because of course they can't get to that stop. So they maybe need to find an alternative. And if it's the only stop in that spot, then, then maybe yes. However, the majority of these stops that we are suggesting, um, eliminate, there is an alternative way to still reach those destinations. It just may be less convenient and maybe takes a little bit more time. Um, so I don't have a number, uh, today because I just don't. Um, but in the future I could, uh, get that number and continue to ask those conversations from the riders that are currently using it. How they're going to navigate that moving forward. Um, yeah.
Thank you. Is there someone else over here at the hand? Oh, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Stephanie, has there been any follow-up conversations with soggy mobility? A, a number, I think there's five of the member municipalities sitting around the horseshoe that are, are members of, uh, SMART and as well as five, I think it's five municipalities from Bruce County. So there's already been a really good start as far as, you know, Bruce and Gray Counties, you know, looking at that model. Uh, it is. It provides the service that's required for people that live rural without having to get to a point. Uh, it is more expensive. Um, but recently, you know, our board had to tackle the, the tough question about the municipal contributions. As opposed to what the user should pay. And we increased our, our rates from 55 cents a kilometer to 70. Looking at Warren because he has the numbers better than I do. So we, you know, that was percentage wise, that was a big increase. The, uh, the one-time fee went from 7.50 to $8. Uh, in our municipality, we increased because the board allowed each member municipality to adjust, or at least us as a pilot to adjust our, uh, municipal contribution. So we took our kilometer rate from 55 cents to a, a dollar nine to be more reflective of what a specialized service would actually cost and reduce the municipal contribution. The feedback I, I've received has been, we're just glad to have the service if it costs a little bit more. So now the cost, you know, to get a, a trip into the Owen Sound Hospital from, from Chatsworth costs $35 return as opposed to, you know, 20 before. So it's still very reasonable. It's, it's, it's tough to drive anywhere in this, uh, this county for $20. So, um, I, I do think there is some avenue to increase our fees a little bit to keep it sustainable. I agree with, you know, other members that we want to have a, a transit system, but it has to be sustainable. And I think that's trying to find that sustainability is, uh, the issue that we're struggling with. So more of a comment, Mr. Warden, as opposed to a question. I guess the question was what further discussions have taken place with soggy mobility because one of the issues we have is, you know, we've got different services, uh, you know, H C, everybody's running buses different places. And often there's not many people on them and there's that ability, or at least a sense that there's an ability to have more people on those buses when they're already traveling. And I don't know how we ever get to the point that we can manage that. But I, I know soggy and typically, you know, there are eight-person buses and there's usually one client on them. Um, so it's seems to be a waste.
Thank you, your worship. So all of that is, is valid and, and true. Soggy Mobility and HCSS, they do have some strict mandates and legislation that they have to follow, which sometimes creates the challenge of working together simply because they have guidelines they have to follow, and we have less guidelines to follow. So it's just navigating those waters and figuring that out. If county council decides to invest long-term in transit, like, and make, we're looking for sustainable solutions. I think one of the best sustainable solutions is to work with Soggy Mobility and HCSS and our taxis and our ride-sharing companies. And we all need to work together to get people from point A to point B. And previously I have spoken with Soggy Mobility and they were all for that. And they thought that was a great idea because they could help get the people who needed an accessible ride to where they needed to go because they have those vehicles. And like you said, they have an extra seat. So it's just a matter of taking that commitment, understanding that this is a commitment and a vision of where we want to go, and then pursuing those avenues. But if we go that route, it needs to be working towards the goal of on-demand and helping people move in an on-demand fashion rather than tying in those existing systems into a fixed route conventional bus. Those two, I don't know will connect, but we can work together in different ways to solve the needs and increase opportunities for transit.
Thank you, Stephanie. Counselor DeBreen, and then I'll go back to Warren.
Thank you, through you, Warden. Hi, Stephanie. Again, in determining the time of those four trips to Owensound to Orangeville, let's say, what are the times that would be proposed? And do they allow for someone to get to Orangeville to connect with a go, to get back from work, to get home?
Thank you, through you, your worship. So currently, if we stick with four trips, that's what we're currently doing. So we wouldn't actually need to change the schedule, which is part of the, I guess, also part of the reason why I'm hoping we stick with four. Because then the residents would be less phased by it. They wouldn't need to change their work schedules. They could just keep going. So that would be the hope. The schedules wouldn't need to change. But to answer your other question, yes, but it has to be perfect. Like the person has to align everything. We have made it that people can get themselves down and back. It just all depends on what you're doing down there and how long everything is, and if the go bus isn't late. So we've done our best to align it and make those things possible for people because we do have specifically Dundalk residents that travel into Brampton for work and then come home in the same day using our system and the GO system.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, we, oh, Counselor Deckard, sorry. I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you, Warden. My questions are around the provincial funding. We're fortunate enough at Soggy Mobility that we get a fair bit of MTO gas tax. What is stopping the county from also being able to tap into that resource?
Through your worship, so one is a long-term investment to transit. We would need a council resolution to be passed to invest, say that we are committed to transit, and then we can apply for gas tax funding. Our number wouldn't, our gas tax allotment for the county wouldn't be very high based on the quote that I've received from MTO because we take, it's based on ridership, investment into transit, and then we only can pick from what's left. As in, if other municipalities are already using the gas tax towards their transit, then we wouldn't have access to that population to count into our number. I can bring that number, like that whole slide that MTO has shared with me, or perhaps the clerk can send it along afterwards. But I have received an official unofficial quote as to that number that we could receive.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, not seeing any further discussion. I'll call the question, and that includes option one, as we outlined earlier. I'll call. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That is carried. Thank you, Stephanie. Appreciate your time. Okay, we do not require the closed session, but we will go back to consent item 6B now. Counselor Matrasos, would you like to propose something different, or would you just like to speak to it? Or will you make the motion to receive it?
Oh.
Thank you, Warden. Yes, I would be happy to make the motion to receive it. I just wanted to have a moment to be able to discuss it. Thank you, Warden. And through you, the reason that I, I asked for a moment to be able to discuss it is because I'm also aware of, of communication that went out to the membership in terms of the, of, of presenting this material. So this material has come to us in the form of correspondence, and I greatly appreciate Mr. Torrance and being able to, to put so much detail into it. That really is helpful for us to be able to digest it in written form. And this would have been in the form of a deputation if it had come here. But that said, with our, our newly, newly constructed Finance and Budget Committee, this seems like a perfect match in which that's exactly the kind of thing that, that, that committee could hear as well. And I am aware, because I did reach out to CAO Wind Grove, and I do know that she did reach out to Mr. Torrance to arrange for that kind of organization. So I did want to put it, to, to pull it in order to be able to ask staff if they would like to be able to provide some clarification or some comments with regards to the points, and in particular the asks at the bottom, this, this piece of correspondence. Thank you.
Mary Lou, you want to have a, a go at that, please?
I'll stand. It's easier for everybody to see me. So the, the Rate Pairs Association in their letter, and of course, they've delegated to council in the past with Mr. Torrance. There's, there's a number of things that they're interested in. And of course, with the new Finance and Budget Committee, we're going to be working with that committee very closely to look at what their interests are. As staff, we have some things that we think we'd like to bring forward, and that'll help us shape the direction. So we have the first meeting in March and a second meeting in May. And it's the May meeting that the Rate Pairs Group is going to present as a delegation. There are a few things. When we talk about zero-based budgeting, some form of it, like, for example, we do do that. It's not a formal process. There are some things that you really, you don't do zero-based on, like you don't do zero-based on utilities. You don't do zero-based on the food in our long-term care homes, et cetera. But departments, when they're doing their budget, are taking a look at, you know, the past few years for transportation and paramedic services. For example, we take a look at fuel and five-year averages. Pat and his team aren't, you know, predicting like the worst year ever for a winter storm. We have reserves in, in that event. There's a, a comment also about a sources and uses report. And I'd have to speak to the group or Mr. Torrance to find out exactly what they're looking for. I, I'm not aware of anything in particular that like another upper tier has done. And there's some things that we honestly can't attribute. You know, where the, if we got provincial funding, for example, for long-term care, I can't attribute that X percent of people at Gray Gables come from Gray Highlands. There's no requirement that you have to be a Gray County resident in order to be in a long-term care home. With Ontario Works, you know, we, we're not going to be able to pick and choose through and find out, you know, what percentage of the population is from the city of Owensound, et cetera. So there's some things, I'm really not sure what it is they're looking for and how they're looking for us to present it. The, the bigger thing is, you know, as a council, what is it, what are we presenting to you? Are you getting the information you need from us? And if you're not, like, that's where this is all going to funnel through the Budget and Finance Committee, providing, you know, more opportunities to discuss certain things and looking forward into the future. That's where a lot of, like, where we're looking with the, the new software that we're going to begin implementation on, multi-year budgeting. You've seen a 10-year capital forecast before, but you've never seen a multi-year operating budget either. Which, given the pressures we've had this year, I think that's going to be a really important thing for the next few years. We're going to have substantial money with redevelopment, but also knowing with collective agreements and like, what is the impact, not just on this year, but next year? And it's very hard to cost that out and present it to you without having a software.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mary Lou, for that. Oh, Kim, do you want to add something? Sure, go ahead.
Thanks. Can I ask the clerks to, can you pull up the document that I just shared with you?
So just to refresh councils, yeah, to refresh councils' memory, we have had these kinds of requests from the Blue Mountain Rate Pairs Association in the past, and we've done our best to try and provide the information that they're looking for in a, in a way that's been kind of broken down to meet their requests. You can kind of scroll down to the next page, Sarah. So this talked about roads. This talked about, this was a future focused back from 2022 about some of the investments that we intended to make in roads capital. I'm sure Pat's looking at some of those numbers and going, I wish that that was so. Where the numbers are, are perhaps more than what is at the bottom of the page. If you continue on from there, you can see some other investments in facilities, domes and capital. We talk about the various more transportation work around administration and, and maintenance related to roads. We go down from there. We have since 20, between 2015 and 2021, spent $11.3 million on, on road projects as well as some additional funds on facilities, domes and depots. We go down from there. And then we provided an explanation about, from a community services perspective, about the caseload and the work that the Ontario Works does. Go down to the next page, Sarah, as well as what the New Social Housing Department does and how they're involved with the Town of the Blue Mountains. And their children's services and fee subsidy and, and childcare, the early-on center. And then some of the work that Planning and Development has been working with in the, in the Town of the Blue Mountains. So this is a kind of summary that we've provided to them in the past. Maybe, is there one more page? Yeah. And certainly we could, after we've had the opportunity to hear the delegation in May, we can refresh this document and provide some more background. I think that the county's budget that we publish, I mean, we're trying to be as, as open and transparent as we possibly can with the numbers, where the money comes from and how it's being spent. With the new software, the, the new budgeting software will also, we're going to have to get to know it. But it, it does have a specific reporting module that we hope we'll be able to build on what we normally do and even have a, a better tool to help the public understand what happens with the budget. But really, we're in a continuous improvement mode here, and anything that we can do, we want to do. Just by way of background with regard to, through Sarah, that's enough. The discussions with the Rate Pairs Association specifically, their initial contact with this was on the 8th of January. And of course, the next day was the, the post of the council meeting. So there wasn't time for them to get on the agenda for the day that you actually passed the 2024 budget bylaw. So then there was discussion from, from there with them about what would be most appropriate. And we wanted to make sure that the new Budget and Finance Committee at least had an opportunity for an initial meeting to discuss their terms of reference and get a little bit of background before we started receiving delegation. So that was the decision-making process that we went through to, to land on the May meeting. But we're very open to having conversations with them whenever they're required. And if you have any direction for us today, we're happy to take it. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, thank you very much. Oh, Counselor Mackey, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And maybe through you to Counselor Matrasos, just wondering how many households the Blue Mountain Rate Pairs Association would represent?
Thank you. And through the warden, I don't think that I'm, I'm qualified to be able to identify the number of members. I think that question would actually be excellent in the form of correspondence from the county to the rate pair. So in following up and in preparation for the, the, the upcoming meeting, I, I would defer to asking directly the association because I'm not a member and I don't speak on their behalf. Thank you.
Counselor Ackles.
Thank you. And just in reading, the one line that caught me was, "The province may direct what services Gray County provides, but it clearly does not spell out how those services are delivered." There's just an awful lot to that statement that needs to be clarified. I think to the authors of this statement, like, taking a look at long-term care. Geez, there's an awful lot of regulations that, yes, we deliver, and yes, you shall deliver in this manner. Pat, I believe there's some regulations on roads. You, we will, we shall. There is a lot of clearly there. It needs to be going back. Maybe in May we'll have those discussions, Mary Lou.
Thank you, Counselor Ackles. The dialogue continues back and forth amongst all of our municipalities. I'm sure back and forth with our staff here at the county. And, you know, as you've heard me said before, you know, together we're stronger. We don't need to start splitting up into splinters back and forth. Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden Millen. Just a question for Mary Lou. I think a significant challenge that municipalities and counties and government has is trying to explain to residents what inflation looks like to municipalities. Residents take a look at the CPI, they take a look at their household goods. It's reported on a regular basis to the population. You know, inflation is this. We just recently got the report. Inflation, Canada's inflation is down 2.9%. That is a significantly different basket of goods percentage concept than what municipalities, counties, the province is facing when it comes to the way inflation works. And it is not, it, it's understandable for the confusion because ourselves sitting here, it's very difficult to narrow down that number. But this is something that we have to try to explain as, as stonewall it is it can be and freshening it can be to residents that the CPI percentage that residents look at and then use to compare to the municipal increases that we need to look at, they are two vastly different concepts and different numbers. And Mary Lou, I'm just wondering if you can speak to our ability to actually capture what municipal inflation looks like?
Through you, Mr. Warden. There are a number of indices. So for example, when we index the development charges, you know, the development charge index for 2023 was, off the top of my head, around 14%. Now it's below 10. But that's a good indicator of how much the cost of those type of goods are increasing. And it, and it's, I understand it's hard for the general public. You're not replacing your driveway. You're not replacing your roof annually. And we use a procurement process, right? We're looking for the most competitive bidder. And so we, we are using like the, the tools that we have. I will say there was an interesting comment with regard to long-term care redevelopment, and it was from Infrastructure Ontario. So if you remember the, the guideline for redevelopment with that increase in funding came out in November 2022. We had to apply by December 2022. Order to be eligible, you had to be in the ground August 2023. Number of organizations applied, as we did. Some of them weren't anywhere close to where we were. And Infrastructure Ontario said the province is now wondering if those tight turnaround times and that added funding contributed to the, the increase in prices they've seen on Warden tenders. Don't know. Don't know. So it it's a tough business and you're right, like when our provincial partner, because we are the partner in delivering a number of services on behalf of the province, if they don't keep pace. So for paramedic services, they give us fifty percent of the last year's budget. Adjusted for amortization. If we went over budget, that's too bad. They give us fifty percent of last year's budget. They used to index it for inflation. They no longer. So are you paying more than fifty percent? Yeah. Because our partner doesn't keep up. That's something and maybe, you know, we do need to do a better job of letting the public know. You know? Does long term care operate, you know, in some places like the for profit without a levy? Yes. They're trying to make money off long term care. Here, you know, the taxpayer is also contributing to that as well as the province and the people that live there. I don't know whether that helps to explain. There's, there's a lot of contributing factors. There's no one easy answer.
Thank you, Mary Lou. That helps, I think. Counselor McQueen.
Here, Mr. Warden. I think the one thing it has cost are us more money is carbon tax. I see it on the fuel bills that I approve, seventeen cents per liter. All that is affected by everything it moves. Do we get any rebate from carbon tax? Because they always talk about rebate. So if you add that, now we, there's H S T on top of that. But we do get the H S T most part back, right? But that underlying is touching everything that moves. So we see the fuel charge surcharge or whatever. You see that, I know from our tenders there. So and that's going up April first. So as that continues to keep going up, we're going to keep seeing pressure put on everything we buy, everything we do, everything we use is going to have that effect. So whether you like it or don't, it's there. And it's being affected to everything we do. So and we don't get rebate.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I think we've strayed just a little bit from where the letter was going, but nonetheless, good discussion. And if anybody wants to stay and discuss it more, I welcome them to do that. But I'm going to tell you that this guy wants to move on. So unless there's any more specific questions to the letter, I'll ask that we do not, I don't think we have any other business. I haven't heard of any notices of motion. Oh, the clerk is Oh, the vote. We actually have to vote to receive that letter. That's right. Sorry about that. Really trying to move it along. Yeah. So all those in favor, that is carried. Thank you very much. No other business, no notice of motion. What I am going to do is I'm going to see if Mr. Bordenial, Counselor Bordenial, yes, he is, he'll move the motion to adjourn. Thank you, Peter. Any second, or Counselor Patterson, all those in favor, that is carried. We're adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.